Correctly, and one of the things we did find was the appropriation language of a double appropriation in the, in the public health. So, we were aware of that already, and we knew that that had to be a technical correction. We also found, for example, a duplicate appropriation. There was a $565,000 for detox programs. That is a separate appropriation for mental health, for the pass-through for the contractors, but it's also included in their miscellaneous provision under contractual, or under contractual. So, we want to make those changes so that when we add up all of the appropriation for all of the general fund, for all of the special fund, it will total no more than 540, all right, and no more than 112. So, we're gonna go back this morning, make some of those changes, bring those amendments, and so we're, we'll come back at 2:00, or maybe 2:30, Senator, yeah. And then we'll present those amendments, and we'll begin moving forward on the balance of the budget. So, this committee's in recess until 2:30.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My colleagues, I want to apologize for the inordinate delay between our appointed reconvening time and the hour. It's actually 4:00. We have been, we finished up the administrative section of the bill, and the last time we left off, we had tabled the miscellaneous appropriation section of the bill, based mainly the miscellaneous section on the supplemental annuities, and the COLA, and the medical and dental benefits. And those are contained in, beginning on, I think it's page, for me, it's page 128 on my copy of the bill, and it's Chapter 9. We, we had done the public streetlights appropriation, and then, as I mentioned, we were doing the, we tabled the appropriation to retirees for the supplemental annuities and other costs, in addition to the, that was in, that's contained in Section 2. Section 3 is the survivor supplemental annuity. Section 4 is disability supplemental annuity. Section 5 are the retirees supplemental annuity additions. Section 6 would be the appropriation for the cost of living. And then, Section 7 was the TOSI, which we discussed, and Section 8, and again, these are, would need to be made as technical corrections because the numbers are not lining up. So, it'd be, Section 8 would be the additional vacancy approval, vacancy pool appropriation. So, we, we would be on Section 2, which is the appropriation for retirees and supplemental annuities. I also have an amendment that I need to pass out that affects the allocation of the different appropriations that have been approved by the body so far. As noted by my colleagues, and I, I thank all of my colleagues who continue to remain engaged in the process here, and are pointing out some of the areas of concern that we need to take a look at, that we will have to come and look at. As I remember, as I remember stating earlier, we're gonna have to come back one last time to make a sweep for things like identifying the specific allocations for the special fund appropriations, where we have a mixture of special fund and general fund for an appropriation in a separate, in a specific object category, in a specific department and agency. And those, we have continued to work on to get to that point where we're gonna be able to give the body a spreadsheet that specifically identifies the allocation of those special funds, because sometimes we just say, "The following appropriations below come from Manpower Development Fund, General Fund, et cetera," and then it's lump sum at the bottom, and it didn't spread them out, I mean delineate it. So, we are going to have to do that, and in, in a return to ensure that all the numbers are added up. I also received a memo from Senator Cavos this afternoon, and I certainly appreciate that. I certainly am very grateful for the time he and his staff took. And those are the same things that we've noted, that we're gonna have to perform that kind of diligence when we finally engross these bills and identify those appropriations and allocations of the special fund, plus all of the additions that they all tally up. I do want to assure the body that there was no intention at all to appropriate above $540 million, and we will not appropriate above $540 million. And one of the corrections, of course, that will have to be made is to delineate that appropriation for the MIP program, that that $15 million appropriation is only appropriated once and not twice, as what had occurred in the bill and what was pointed out. So, that would have to be a, a change that we'll make as a, as a motion for a technical amendment and so forth. So, what I wanted to do was pass out, first of all, just go through the appropriations for retirees and supplemental annuity benefits, and, and try to finish up that supplemental. I have an appro, the amendment that I will offer will affect the number in this, in this line item, but it's a, an amendment that is not just specific to this line item, but will be specific to other appropriations that the body has, has, has entertained in the past. So, I just wanted to see if there was any concern and amendments that anybody may want to make to the language and not the appropriation level of the supplemental annuity benefits and for other costs contained in Chapter 11, Section 2. Page 128. And as you know, this is normally referred to as the 4238. That's correct. These are, there's one change in the boilerplate language that I had inserted based upon some testimony that we had received. One of the things that has occurred is that, and that's, language is to be found on page 133, and it's a new subsection III. And this section would allow a retiree or survivor eligible to receive the supplemental annuity may waive their supplemental annuity payment authorized herein by filing an authorized affidavit waiving such payment with the retirement fund. It's on page 133. Yeah. And it's III? Check. Yeah, it's on the main bill. The reason for this is that we have received many requests, is that some of the retirees, if you add the supplemental annuity to their income, they, they become ineligible for other benefits like home healthcare, like long-term care. And so, we put this in so that they may voluntarily waive it, and that would make them then eligible for some of the Social Security benefits, as well as some of the MIP benefits or Medicaid benefits, that would allow them then to access long-term care or supplemental care and things like that. And so, this was done based upon testimony that we, written testimony we had received from some members of the, some guardians, as well as retirees themselves. Yes, Senator Tenorio?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the explanation. I appreciate the, the explanation. Aside from that, the language, by and large, except for the strikeout and underlying sections which are additive or amending existing language, is the same language we've addressed here in this body for a better part of eight years together.
That's correct.
On all of the budgets that are pretty much culminated in this final language as is crafted before, is correct? There's no dramatic change aside from the one that you just mentioned?
No, there's none.
Okay, thank you.
There's none. The, the only other item is that we require, of course, the reimbursement from the, of the autonomous agency share and so forth. And again, that's been the boiler, boilerplate language in the past, okay? So, that would be for supplemental annuity, and then for, for COLA, it's the same thing. The, one other language, I'm sorry, that I added in the supplemental annuity is to authorize the Director of Administration and the Retirement Fund to get together, and if feasible, distribute the supplemental annuity and the regular annuity at the same time. Right now, the supplemental annuity is mailed, I think, once a month, or at a different time from when the retirees get their regular annuity. So, what we're, what we authorize in here is for the Retirement Fund Director and the Retirement, and the Director of Administration to get together, and if feasible, send it out at the same time, so that the retirees receive their regular annuity, because the regular annuity comes from the Retirement Fund. The supplemental annuity is actually a separate check cut by Department of Administration. So, they get two checks. And so, we're asking them to, to see if they can merge the two. It gets sent out at one time, they save money, and so forth, but it doesn't mandate them, but it allows them to do that if they feel that that'll result in cost savings and better service to the, to the annuiton. Senator Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm, I'm sure you just explained this, and, and yet, to my feeble brain, I'm gonna ask you if you could explain it again.
Okay.
These amendments that, that you've put in, you've got the same language for retirees supplemental annuity additions and for
The disability.
Disability, right?
That's right.
Any, any disability retirement annuitent eligible to receive the supplemental annuity may waive their supplemental annuity payment authorized herein by filing authorized, notarized affidavit waiving such payment with the Retirement Fund.
Right.
Why, why would anybody waive the payment?
For example, the supplemental annuity may make, may bring you up to an income level, because it's counted as income, that you would not qualify for long-term care under Social Security. So, it's that in, there are income thresholds. It would also, for example, when they go and look at the MIP program, because it's also cost-sharing income base, you may not qualify for nursing home care, because your, your annuity plus your supplemental is above the income guidelines. So, these, this was feedback we received from annuitants and retirees. So, it doesn't mandate it, it just allows you to do so.
Thank you.
Right. So, that, that is the, the result of that. So, those are the only sections on the supplemental annuity and the COLA. I do now want to, if I may, ask Senator Barnes, the chair, is she here, so that I can present a couple of amendments? Can we pass them on? Did we pass them? Okay. Perhaps, maybe I can just do it from here. Okay. Okay. The First Amendment I have is, is an amendment that would increase the appropriation for fire, the Guam Police Department and the Department of Corrections, in their regular salary, their benefits object class, to include holiday pay. For example, the, the first one there, Guam Fire Department, the regular pay object class 111, which you find on page 154 of the bill, is increased to $17,959,964. And the benefits object class 113 total is increased to $4,937,194. And this is to fund the firefighter special pay, which includes holiday pay, automatic overtime, EMT incentive pay, and what they call the firefighter 106 hours. And let me tell you why this is necessary. When we figured out the regular pay line for the fire department, we went off the staffing pattern, which said, "This position is paid at this annual salary." And so, we took a look at that, and we increased that by 10% for last year. Then, we went back and increased that another 10% for this year's second 10%. Yeah, okay.
I apologize. Speaker Ben, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to provide the following amendment that everyone has, and I started explaining it. So, the, the current, if you take a look at page 104 of the bill, the current regular pay line item, I believe, is about 13, little over 13 million, right? And so, what happened was, when we were looking at that, we felt that, well, we looked at it, and we looked at the staffing pattern, and what each position paid based upon the staffing pattern, that, the third quarter staffing pattern. And so, we then increased those by 20%, basically, to make up for the first and second. What we didn't do was that that base pay also included the firefighter 106, the EMT pay, the holiday pay, which was not part of the 13. So, we were short, basically, when we looked at that, because we misallocated that amount, because there was another line, 1112, which shows overtime and special pay. And so, when we did the calculation, we thought the overtime and special pay was in the 112. But, the firefighters, for example, count their 106 plus the 14 automatic pay as regular pay. And so, when we did the, the math on, on calculating the regular pay times the hourly rate based upon the staffing pattern, it did not include those special pay benefits. So, that ended up being short. And then, of course, when that wasn't in there, the benefits weren't calculated also based on that. So, we had to then go back, and this was, we, we went back and forth with BBMR on this, and saying that, "No, we put in the second 10%." They're saying, "Yes, you did, but you, you didn't put back in all this special pay that they had." In the Guam Police Department, the regular object, regular pay object class on page 73, is increased, is amended to increase to $16,426,202. And then, the benefits object class will then increase to $4,515,563 to fund the police special pay. And this thing, this is the same thing happened. We didn't see the night differential. Then, the Guam Police Department gets an additional six hours of what they call six shift change pay, right? And so, per pay period. So, that wasn't built into the regular base pay. So, when we did the staffing pattern again, we didn't see that. And then, things like hazardous pay and holiday pay were not included in the staffing pattern cost. So, that would also increase. And then, the Department of Corrections, the regular pay would need to increase to $8,000, $8,945,026. And then, of course, a corresponding increase in the benefits object class to $2,458,988 to fund the corrections special pay. And that includes things like holiday pay, hazardous pay. There's a special pay called a DOC differential pay. I still can't figure what it is, but I know it's being paid. And then, of course, the night differential pay. So, those three items will increase in your line item budget under those object class, and we are funding those increases from the changes we're making in the line items below. And that would be the appropriation on the following adjustments, then, to the general fund. To fund these special pay for corrections, fire, and police will come from the reduction in A, contractual object class 230 on page 30, line 21, and that is a DPW line item. And that is a $256,000 reduction from the appropriation of $12,200,000 to $12,050. And, public, public health, I'm sorry. And then, of course, the, the next item is an appropriation, again, from the contractual line item, is reduced to $4,183,077 on page 34, line 32. And that is a reduction of $451,000 from the original appropriation amount. And again, these go down. Section C is an appropriation in the regular salary for the, the mayors. We gave the mayors an additional $431,000 in new vacancies, not existing, but brand-new positions that are vacant. And so, we had to reduce that back to take it and, and fund a special pay for those. So, it's nothing that the mayors had at this time. It was brand-new positions, and that, so we reduced that amount. Those are vacancies. And then, line D is a reduction in the University of Guam of about $204,750 from their general fund appropriation. But, that will be replaced in another amendment that we have in terms of the tobacco settlement bonds. There's interest in the tobacco settlement bond of the same amount, which we, is being proposed to be appropriated to them. They get that from their trust fund. The E is a reduction of approximately $399,000, and those are from the court, and those are court vacancies, again. Those are new vacancies within the, within the court. And F is an appropriation decrease of $200,000, and that is the court-appointed fees. The original request was for $694,000. We increased that to a million. We're reducing it by $200,000. And G is the object category for the Department of Corrections. That, the Department of Corrections requested a total appropriation in the contractual of $3,640,000. We had increased it to a million for something, for additional meals, but the original request was just for the $3 million. So, we, we put that back into the salary category. And H is a reduction of $20,000 for DPW. And DPW only requested $40,000 for overtime. And so, we had done a $60,000, so we're taking the $20,000 back. I is an appropriation from the contractual object class. These are DPW. Under their contractual, we reduced that by $400,000 from $206,000 to $2132, or 200, 2.6 million to $2,132. And then, the appropriation for supplies and materials reduces also by $200,000. That's DPW. And that's things for like bolstering buses, seats, and other supplies for belts and so forth. That was, had been increased by over 500, $789,000. So, we took a, a $200,000 reduction there. And then, the Capitol Outlay is reduced by $190,000, and that was for a fence at the southern bus shelter, bus parking lot. And so, that, those are where the reductions, all of these reductions are over and above the requested amount by these departments and agencies, and have not reduced the current operating requirements that they requested for in this budget. These were all taken from additional increases we gave to them when we thought we had the money, because the special pay was not calculated in our allocate, or was misallocated in our budget. And so, that is the, the amendment, ladies and gentlemen, that is needed in order to ensure that we fund, oh, I'm sorry. The, the last one is an increase by $949,772 of the appropriation of the solid waste operations funds. When BBMR sent down the budget request for DPW, there was a surplus in the solid waste operation fund of an unallocated surplus of $1.4 million. And they did that because of the budget ceiling. We met with, with, with BBMR, and they agreed that we could fund some of the operational requirements of DPW to the tune of $498 out of that surplus of the solid waste operating fund for power, water, and their increments for the staff. And then, the balance is just appropriated to the solid waste division of the remaining 1.4 unallocated and unappropriated balance in that special fund. And so, that is how we have looked at this, in terms of funding the special pay for Department of Corrections, GPD, and DOC. We were, we had covered all of the special pay in the other areas in which there are law enforcement personnel. And we did, we were able to do that, because they didn't get the special pay under 10%, because they're not, they're, they're much more clean and straightforward on that. They don't have the 106 and so forth, and all of these things. So, it was, again, this is the change that's, that's needed in order to make sure we cover this pay for our law enforcement personnel. So, I'm, I'm open to questions, and thank you very much, Madam Chair, for allowing me to present the amendment.
Thank you, Senator Pangolin. And are there anybody else wishing to speak on the amendment? I have a couple of names ready. Not, we'll go ahead and start with Senator Cavos. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this is a very substantive amendment being proffered here. Looking at these categories, you have, again, in one, you have the Guam Fire Department, and this is the regular pay, 104, is increased to $17,959,64. And I'm looking at, and also, benefits object class 113, and total is increased to $4,937,194. When you compare it with the existing appropriation, which states in the regular salaries $13,9768, you're seeing a substantial, again, increase in, in both the pay, as well as on the overtime, which is at $2,890,000. Now, it's being increased to $4,937. You see similar increases in the Guam Police Department in, in the lower sections. Benefits, exactly. What I'm, what I'm seeing here is substantive changes in appropriations that have been put forward in the Guam Fire Department, the Guam Police Department, Department of Corrections. And then, you have in four differing areas, in whether it's in the mayors dealing with, with cleaning up of the schools, or University of Guam, you're seeing reductions. Madam Chair, my concern here is, this is so substantive, we already have an issue, and again, I, I want to thank the Chair for working with him. I did send him an analysis where we have already an imbalance of, of over appropriations towards the amounts that had been already ratified in terms of revenues. And from my standpoint, at about $13 million, there's not clarity, sure clarity, clarity to it, because there are certain areas where the general fund and special funds are intermingled in their uses for a utility bank fund. And with that, we can't get an exact total of what there is in terms of over appropriations with the general fund. My concern here is, you're, we're having these movements upward and downward in, in certain areas. I want to, I appreciate the, the statements and the explanations made by the Chair, but as substantive as these, I'm, I'm requesting that probably the best thing to do is, is get, again, a spreadsheet, and I know we've been working on that, just for, so we can understand. This is, this is very difficult to understand and swallow within a, within a reasonable time. We're, we're making some major adjustments in differing departments upward, as well as downward. And, and we have to ascertain what those impacts may be. and, and we have to ascertain what those impacts may be. Not to mention that, again, from one Senator's viewpoint and some of my analysis, there already is an imbalance, and I'm, I'm concerned that this will cause even further confusion. So I guess my first question would be if we could maybe call for a little recess so that we could get a, a spreadsheet and see where we're at in terms of the balances so they're reconciled, and then also a spreadsheet for, for these particular categories just to make sure that they balance, that there, if there's going to be an increase in certain areas, that there is a decrease in other areas. I'm not, I'm not going to ask to divide the question because I understand that this has to-
Senator Calvo, just based on that, I'm just going to take a minute recess so that I can talk to the committee about this. We're in recess for one minute. This legislature is back in session. Ladies and gentlemen, as we continue to deliberate, discuss the issue, we're going to go ahead and take, excuse me, excuse me. We're going to go ahead and take a recess as, uh, as we continue to work on the matter on hand and get more information as, as clarified. So Senator Adams, would you-
Yeah, can I just make a brief announcement? We have a public hearing this evening at six PM at Dedado Community Center.
Thank you. At Dedado, regarding, regarding-
Regarding the rights-of-way manual, the bill two-oh-seven.
Thank you. So with that on hand, we'll, we'll recess till nine o'clock tomorrow morning.